It is important for elected officials and for the public to be very clear about the purpose of the public comment period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to inform the governing body about their views. The meeting itself belongs to the governing body. The public does not participate in the decision making. Instead, it provides input to the governing body, which takes the input into consideration in making its decisions. Each person here will be given opportunity to speak with a three-minute timeframe. If you're gonna speak and you'd like to speak, then you will come to the podium, give us your name and your address for the record, and you will be able to speak. Three minutes will be the timeline. Again, this is a time for citizens and residents to express their views in order to inform the council. Explain the council will not engage in the dialogue with the public during this public hearing period. So I'd like to start off by saying thanks for everyone for coming out tonight and expressing your views here in just a minute. There are some on each side of the aisle here, some for the property maintenance code and some opposed to it. Remember, we all live in a community, in this community, and we want to do what we feel is in the best interest of everyone. So let's try to be very respectful and courteous to our neighbors and to our friends as we get ready to start this public hearing, okay? So, we're here this evening for a public hearing. This is on the property maintenance codes. I think, Mr. Sims, did you, everyone sign in that wanted to sign in? And so the town has proposed, or has passed, the first reading of a property maintenance code. This is the public hearing before the second reading begins. And at this time, I will entertain anyone that would like to address the council with their public view. Again, come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes. And I'm gonna try to hold it for three minutes. So the floor is open for public comment. Yes, sir? Okay.
Y'all know me. I'm Lily Franklin and I'm Paul Coleman's sister. And y'all know that he has Alzheimer's. And it's not like that he lives on Silver Street. He's in a nursing home right now. Don't know how long he'll be there. But it's not like that we've been saying we're not doing anything. You know, Curtis, I talk to you about stuff. You know, I let us know that he had Alzheimer's. And sometime back, we was trying to get everything situated, and he got so upset. We had to take him to the emergency room, and we went and called that for rest, and they shocked him back. And I said then, it's his land, his stuff, and I will not only be the one send him to a cemetery over his stuff. But a lot of the stuff is being moved. I can name it off to y'all. And I asked all the people that was bringing stuff for him to work on it and find when he got sick, not to bring it because he was not able to work on it for people. Because he gave a lot of stuff to people that he fixed. But he loves sitting in that old station wagon, and we told his friends not to fix it. Fix the station wagon for his truck. He was afraid that he could get out and hurt his stuff in somebody else. And I'll talk as fast as I can, a lot of, I've got a bunch I need to say. But he loves sitting in there because he's cold natured and he wanted to go out there and sit in it when the wind was blowing to watch the traffic go by. But this is all the stuff that I know is gone. I've been sick and I've not been over there for a little while. But the station wagon's gone, his camper's gone, his tractor's gone, his granddaughter moved her car. And the lawnmowers that was running was, and the bicycles. He gave a lot of the bicycles to kids and stuff anyway. And for rent the trailers, he tossed them on. Because in his mind, he still had his store in Coolville and here, and we couldn't do anything else to give it any other way. And you know, I talked to you, it got plugged up, it ran behind the store, and it flooded everything he had down there twice. And we tried to deal with that. But it's not like we ain't been doing anything. We've been dealing with a whole lot of sickness in the family too. And it's easy for people to go around and make pictures of stuff. And as far as the bust that was in the paper, it has upset a lot of people. And I don't know why it upset me when I seen it because nothing was said to me or his daughter about it. But as far as the bust, I don't know what scene it, she said she did. And I know why he put it there, because he put his stuff in it because people were stealing his stuff back when it was put there. But this is what's been going on, and so many people has come to me and talked to me and wanted me to stand for them too. Because a lot of people just don't have anybody to stand for them. And they all said to me, and I'm telling you, quote what they said, they come to my house and call me. When you come on people's land and it's their land and you take it off, it's same as stealing. And I agree with them, a hundred percent. And they said, they're the ones who worked and paid for this stuff. And you all, they didn't pay no taxes when you just running and come and asking for your buck. I'm just quoting to you, and I agree with them. I just might as well be saying it too because I agree with them. And they said, then when you get sent there, and most people that stayed here in this town, they are not... I don't guess they have as much as most of the people, you know? Because I worked on health for fifteen years and I know how it is. But anyway, this is how people is thinking, which is turning on them after they voted for you and stuff. And I can, I can understand that. And I say it's amazing how one or two people can come back here. And if other people had stayed here and kept staying going, the town kept going then while everybody else was gone. And all I can say, if you just can sit up there and you just can make stuff like this and you just have a clear conscience about it and stuff, then more perfect than you. Because one thing about it, our dear family father, Jesus Christ, we're about to pour the sin. I'll have to say that, and that's all I've got to say.
That's right. Thank you for coming in.
Hi, my name is Mark Hoddle. I live in nine hundred Doe. All right, so I came from South Bend, Indiana, and there's a lot of reasons why I left South Bend. And what this new ordinance is, was one of the reasons of many why I left South Bend and moved here. Okay, so why did I choose here? I just felt like it was the best place, got relevance here, is an easygoing community, I really enjoy it here. In fact, I, we just had a poll come out recently that made Cookville like number five for retirement in the whole nation. The nation's the greatest in the world. I mean, we've got a lot of things to be thankful for, and one of them is civil liberties. And I feel like this stomps on our civil liberties, coming in and telling us what we can do with our property. I've seen, I've come from bigger cities and I've seen what happens when city councils get together and start condemning things. Start condemning large areas of business so they can pit up a ballpark. You know, just changing the flow of traffic so that everybody has to slow down and, and go through at a slower pace but yet endanger the public. City of South Bend did that. They put in, they took two four-one, four-one ways and changed it down to two one-ways. And then put up all these bicycle paths and walkways. And after they did that, they had three people get killed on their streets. Why? Some things you just don't do. This is one of them things you just don't do. Why would you treat your people like servants or like slaves, enslaving them to a law that makes no sense? What does putting a plate on anything do? It does nothing but pay more money to the states and the cities coffers. I mean, that's silly. Everybody has a right to leave their stuff out. If it gets stolen, they have to make report. That's on them. That's all I got to say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Hoddle.
Guys, I'm Danny Quall. I've been living two or nine summers since nineteen eighty-two. I just like to ask people to die one time. Two months ago, you put a twenty-six percent increase on these people that's got ten thousand, eight thousand income per year. That's what they live on. You run around and wipe. Don't they fix these places? They don't have the money to fix these places there. They're not fortunate. If you died with five, six steps when you was born on the life of income. You aren't. You're up there. You're walking back when you was taller. I'm on a fixed income. When I bought a eighty-two thousand dollar vehicle, I love to be on a fixed income if I can do that. But what you're doing, you're coming from that. I don't blame some of these places. They need to be chancellor. But guys, you're beating on people that makes eight or draws eight to ten thousand dollars a year. And some of them work and don't make that. These are the people you're hurting. If this was such a problem, why didn't you always go and say, hey, Mr. Smith? One of your neighbors is complaining. Let's try and straighten a few things up. But your neighbor is not complaining. It's guys that's not being here. This is their hometown. And you're, you're not hurting these guys that's driving these eighty, ninety thousand dollar vehicles that live in these big homes. You're hurting the poor people. You know, Mr. Banker, you've got a lot of poor people that's in this with you. Chris, you've got a lot of poor people that lived in Fort Worth, you know, people with you, Mr. Lane. Mr. William, run a dog for you. Where did your income come from? Ask the back of the people. Ask the people about you what you're sitting today. Don't forget them. They're poor. They ain't got no way to find you guys. Mr. Coleman, appreciate what you done on this street that I've paid for. Appreciate it. But you're the one that got up on the life of income. It's fine good. Grace, thank the Lord for that. But don't beat the poor people. God, don't do that. That's all I'm asking you. Work with these people. Don't go out here and say, okay, you got a car that we can't afford right now. Why take that car away? Why? Be patient. Lord, every meeting you have, prayer, I hear you. Let's do this meeting and confess for the people. Don't you not honor in God's will when you ask for that, then you turn against the Lord. Think about what you asked this meeting to do. Ask the Lord to guide you that way, then you turn him. Turn your back on him. You just got to asking the Lord, let's do this meeting for the people. There's some poor people in this town. I'm thankful that, I'm a little bit better off than some of them. I'm not wealthy like you guys. I drive about thirteen hundred dollar truck. I don't drive eighty-two thousand dollar car. I don't live in a three hundred thousand dollar home. But I am blessed to live the way I live, and I'm thank the Lord that I've got what I got. Don't you guys take it away from me. Be patient with the poor people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Guys, my name is Danny Bowman. I've been living here since I was six years old. And I'll tell you, this little town has come a long way. But not by people being to the point of having stuff taken away from them. You got people like, when my mother was living, she was living off of six hundred and eighty, six hundred and ninety dollars a month. Are there a single one of them that can live off six, seven hundred dollars a month? We both knows answer to that. It's nothing. You know, we don't have a whole lot. There's so many people in this town. We got Mr. Kirby here that's worked on every lawnmower for everybody in here at one point in time or another. You're taking it away from this guy. And so many other people like it. It's not right. You wanna, you wanna set a bar and you wanna judge people? Maybe you ought to look in the mirror and see what it's like. I'm just saying, the things that's going on right now with lawnmowers and vehicles and everything, just like old man Coleman's property out there, it's, it's not fair for him. I'll tell you what happens in this town. It's the thing that this, this man right here is done for since he's been in office. This park that he built down here, that's a plus for us. What's not a plus is going in people's yards, taking pictures, and wanting to remove stuff, and they're barely getting back. That's not cool, guys. I'm keeping it to the bare minimum. It's just not right.
Thank you for coming in, Mr. Bowman. Anyone else?
I think everyone agreed that's been up here that it's not, it's not right to take somebody else's property.
Excuse me, Randall Hallson for the record.
Oh, yeah, Randall Hallson, eight twelve Doe Street.
Randall Hallson. Go ahead, Mr. Hallson.
And it's not right to take something that doesn't belong to you, that someone else paid for. I don't care what kind shape it's in. It doesn't change the fact because something's registered. Some people drive what you would consider junk to work every day. So a plate is the only thing, if I didn't have a plate on it, they'd want to haul it out for me. No one in here paid for it. And I'm not against the folks that brought this. I'm not angry with them. I'm angry with what they brought. I don't like it. Don't like the ideology of taking people's civil rights and just stepping on them. And you have to make that decision right here. And I'm not trying to, you know, you guys will make that decision. Because we put you in there, we voted you in to do it. And just, you have to remember that. It's not just a few that put you in. It's the city, the town. And there's a lot of people that this affects. A lot of people out here, not just me, but a lot of other people. And you need to think about this before you just go passing something because somebody hurts it to you. I'm just, I just want to caution you on that. But I'm not angry with any one of them, so I'm not upset. I don't like the ideology. Just like what was said, there's a lot of people that don't have the wealth that some of you have. And you need to think about that before you go because the Bible even tells you to take care of the poor, not to try to push them down. Just remember that. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hallson. Anyone else like to address the council?
My name is Angela Dixon. I live at Terrace Southern Window Street. Guys, I understand those problems about wanting to keep some of this stuff because of shaws and everything. But the thing is, our values of our houses are going down. On top of that, me and my husband, we're a young couple. We have a young family. I want our kids to stay here. I want them to grow here and live here and continue to come back home and all this other kind of stuff. I bought our house. It needed work on it. We have done every single thing on ours. We haven't hired nobody. We paid for that. I worked two jobs. My husband works two. I understand about people's money and all that kind of stuff, but guys, this stuff is crazy. This is in town. If we were in Cookville or anywhere else, all this stuff would have to be gone. We have country outside of city limits. I mean, I understand you guys can't whatever, afford to move out, whatever, but when you own three or four properties in town and all three of them are jumped up and all animals out there, mud, all this other kind of stuff, it's not really nice. It, it's just taking everything down and making all of our values go down. I mean, I painted our house. We built our shelters. We've done everything ourselves. So I'm just saying, property value.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
How do you feel for the people? Talk about the value going down. It goes down anyway. I've got two or three places here in town too.
Let me get your name and stuff for the record.
Ronnie Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you.
But I look at all people. It don't bother me what the neighbor does. But they, they pay taxes. It's like, you might have a house, you might have worked with, well, I've got a house that I work on too. I've worked here, out here for thirty-eight years. I live here too, but I'm not, as long as some of these people's be there. And I can see the part of, you're, you're not gonna make this Coolville. This, this, this is not Coolville. That's why people like staying here. If you look, if you like Coolville, you shouldn't do that because they, you got higher taxes. Oh, yeah, they're coming down. It's a bigger city. They got more industrial. But take the people here. I think they've done real well, you know? Even the, the people in office. But these people, it don't bother me what my neighbor does. You know, if, if they're trying to make it, this is never gonna be, well, just like Detroit. Detroit's nothing now. But it's the same here. People like this town and they wouldn't live here. You know?
And I agree with that.
I don't see...
Long, Mr. Sullivan, for the record, your address, I know it's Preston Street, but what...
Five nineteen Preston Street. But that's the way I look at it. I can see all the people that's in here. They've lived here for a long time, and they have lived for a long time. I didn't work here. I worked in Coolville for thirty-eight years. But it don't matter where you live. I've lived in Indian, I've lived in Florida. I think it's a great town. Why change it? You know, you start changing something, you've got some good people here. When you start changing things, it ain't no good for even you. You talking about your kids? Well, I raised two kids here. I lived out in the country. Still got a place out in the country. But still don't make no difference. It's convenient here in town. A lot of these people's living in the country. But it don't, it don't bother me. It shouldn't bother other people. This, this town ain't gonna be, it's some, this ain't, Florida or something, it's just ain't a resort. This is what people is. And I, I don't see nothing wrong with that myself. I don't see you can, when you start interfering with people's lives, and I see a lot of people that have been here longer than I have, you know? And I see their point. I've lived in a little town. I've lived in nice little clean towns. But it, this does great for what it is. That's my opinion. And I mean, I think you guys done a good job, and yeah, I would think about this because you got a lot of people that I think feels the same way. You started hitting me like me trying to run your business. I can run your business. I got the education. But these people is here, you know? And that's, don't, don't take away from what they, what they got, you know? They're gonna, they go again. You know, that's the way I see it. I don't see you can beautify this place. If you, if you did, you'd move some place where it's already beautified. Because a lot of places are like this. I, I come from a little town in Indiana. And it's a clean little town. It is clean little town. But it happened back years ago, and if there's still places, but I've been it. But this town, I like it because of what it is. If I liked Coolville, I'd move to Coolville. But when you move to Coolville, you're gonna pay more taxes. You're gonna have more taxes. That's, but when you get to start fixing things up, you're gonna pay for it, you know?
Mr. Sullivan, thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming in. I do appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anyone else like to address the council?
Yeah, I will. The last time I came down here, I tried to speak and got shouted down, so maybe they'll let me talk this time. My name's Bridget Quall. It's one twenty-two Rowland Road. What we do, my family owns land in the city. We pay taxes on it. And I worked for the city thirty-three years, and I am disappointed with y'all. I know y'all's, most of these family situation, and y'all have inherited money, made money, and now you're looking on people that ain't got no money. There's a lot of poor people here. They got an old junky car. They got an old car in the backyard, and they'll try to put two together and go work. Well, when y'all get through with them, they're not willing to do that. Or they got an old truck that they ride in on the weekends, and they take one or two and put it together, and that's their fun. And they can go all over the country, go to Florida. And I, I just don't understand it. And all these people that's moved in here, they run it now. The local people don't run it. So I mean, I don't know why I'm speaking. Everybody's got their mind way to it. And I'm sure I'm not uptown, but I can't think of anything else to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Anyone like to address the council?
I would please.
Ms. Lane?
My name's Shannon Harvey. I live on Research Street. I think this involves and concerns everybody inside the city of Livingston. And I think us inside the city of Livingston should have a vote. I think it should be put on ballot and unsput on it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Is there anyone else like to address the council?
My name is Ms. Key. I live on Pretty Light and Sphere Street. We have been over in County all by robs. We live in a nineteen twenties Volvo. We have four actual old Volvo cars that probably the most expensive one might be five thousand dollars. We have actually put two cars together to make one, the one that we're driving now, that husband drives every day. And so we know all about taking vehicles, doing with what you've got, and trying to make the best of what you've got. And in our situation, this is, from the bottom of my heart, this has nothing to do with anybody's lifestyle. We're all working hard here. Everybody's trying to do the best that they can with what they have. But for, for us, you know, it would be nice to feel like that the money that we spend trying to improve our home, trying to improve our vehicles, trying to improve, period, that there's gonna be a positive taken from it instead of it just seeming as though you just really never get anywhere with it. And so, again, we know what it's like to take vehicles and put them together and try to make the best of what we got. We were not raised with any kind of spoon in our mouths. We're just working hard, trying to do the best that we can with what we have. And so it does affect us as well. So whether it be by vote or whether it be by making a decision here, I do feel like something does need to take place just as far as people's property value and things of that nature.
Thank you. Ms. Key? Anyone else like to address the council? Would anyone else like to address the council? Okay. Anyone else to address the council so the, or session, or, excuse me, public hearing will go into a close. Addressing public hearing ordinance twenty-eight, ten dash twelve dash one, twenty-eight, ten dash twelve dash two, twenty-eight, ten dash twelve, three, four, five, six, and eight. We have a public hearing for that as well on the Mason property there.
No, I haven't had any calls on the Mason property nor the Thrasher property or the Peake property, whatever we want to call it. Haven't had any yes or no's either way.
Okay. All right, is anybody else here that wants to talk about the Mason property, the rezoning, or the Peake? the Mason property, the rezoning, or the Peak Thrasher property? Okay. If not, we'll take a five-minute break and we will start the city council meeting in five minutes.